Okay, today is June 21. Plan B, now. The minutes of May 17. Does anyone have a chance to read them? I'll accept the motion when someone's ready. Everybody was here, so anybody can make the motion.
I'm going to make the motion to accept them.
All right, I know.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Maybe? I know. Any changes or big corrections? Anything that's sticking at anybody's craw? No? All right, everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Maybe a false name? Those are good, passed. Now, June 7. I'll take a motion on those, babe. Can we read my agenda? This is it.
It's there. I have some.
Oh, yeah, right here.
Your invoice, that's it.
Waste their show like this. Now, may I?
Uh, move with the minutes of the June 17.
All right, is there a second? Any change or corrections?
One second.
Tom's.
Hold. Is he here? Tom will be there.
Oh, good answer. One second. Gavin's second. Uh, any change or corrections? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, aye?
I essentially just left.
No, no, you got deeper here. Taylor. All right, I signed the invoice for SMRP, so then I'll go on this year's bill. So that'll use up just about the rest of the year.
What?
In a portion of time? Go ahead.
Oh. Uh, did they agree to the more amount, or did they kind of carry over the 150, whatever it was?
No, we had more money than when Michelle got back. We had already paid the 200, I think it was $209 to SMRP. So we had that extra money covered.
Who told them?
And they invoiced for the full 25. Uh, I think we're holding the check.
Did everybody get a copy of this local planning board workshop agenda here?
We all just attended.
This might be... Where's that?
The glass.
Oh, Chris Tosh.
Yeah.
It's pretty much the same thing if you've been the one. You're in a lot of fun stuff. Does anyone else have anything for the soft plus board art? Anything?
I wanted to discuss just our notion of either having a workshop, or we could do it within our regular session, which will... Just some of the issues that have come up recently about boardsmanship, so to speak. And I apologize if offending anybody, or if just took offense the other day when I... In the heat of battle, so to speak, said that she was not eligible for the vote. I apologize if you took offense to that. My concern that evening was reflecting on how we had just gone to that... I don't know if we need to do that.
We got time, everybody's here, what the heck? This will make for good television, too.
The reason that we normally allow those in attendance at a preceding meeting to open the minutes is that they had experience at the meeting of the minutes pertaining. I think the same sensibility should be brought to the notion of site visits and voting subsequent to the site visit on the proposal that was visited. This seems to be sensible. And I'd like to suggest that the board consider that that be a regular guideline that we apply to our conduct. Because it can cut both ways. Sometimes the applicant will be approved with a vote that may include someone who was not at the meeting. And sometimes it could cut to disapprove. So you can't think of it as almost being a positive, so to speak, in the terms of moving a proposal forward, because it can work both ways, yes.
Would if only one or two people made the sidewalk? There's enough people to vote. And that's happened many times. And, you know, we...
You'd think you'd have to reschedule the sidewalk until you have a forum.
I mean, in fairness to the applicant, it seems... And also keeping in mind the sensibility of why we follow the practice of voting on minutes as we do, it just seemed to be a rational... Maybe a more rational approach. And I, as to precedent, I don't think if we maybe had conduct that maybe isn't rational, maybe in terms of our other guidelines, maybe we should look at it as well.
Seems to me that if a person is not able to make a site visit, it doesn't mean that that person can't make a decision. If that person is not going to be able to make a decision, I think it should be that person's decision. I don't know if there's a decision to there. But anyways, I don't think it's somebody else, unless the chairman feels that's the case. But I mean, I think if I wasn't at a site visit, let's say, and I really didn't have a clue what the heck was going on, and I was supposed to vote, I might say, okay, maybe I shouldn't. But for somebody else to say that I shouldn't, I don't think it's right.
I was in there. And I admit that. I'm just, I wanted to remove... And my reason for behaving as I did, the only thing I can say in my defense is, we were on the cusp of a vote, and I thought it was improper that the vote was conducted the way it was about to be conducted. So I opened my mouth too wide, I guess. I'd like to set that aside as a specific incident and look at this as a journal, a rule of conduct.
Well, I tend to agree with Bob. I think if, it doesn't have to be just a sidewalk. If someone has missed a couple of meetings about a particular topic, and then they do show up, and we're going to have a vote on that topic, if they're not comfortable with having enough knowledge to vote tonight... And this has happened in the past. People have said, you know, "I'm not into this enough, I'm not voting tonight." I think that's where we should leave it. I don't think that we should require that nobody can miss a meeting if something's going to be discussed that will be voted on at a later meeting. You know, if you're out sick, if you're on vacation, and you missed the first part of this discussion, and we vote on it at the next meeting, you weren't here, but we were discussing most of it. So does that mean that you can't vote? I don't think this is something that we want to start doing now. Because too often in the past, we've had, let's say, best possible locations, and we've just accepted Ken's recommendation, just looking at pictures, or sometimes not even decent pictures, just an outline, a sketch, without a sidewalk. And to hold up one particular issue, because we all weren't there for a sidewalk, I don't think makes sense. We're all adults. And if someone's not comfortable with voting, then I would expect that they would stand up and say, "Hey, listen, I'm not going to vote on this, because I don't have all the information," or "I, you know, don't feel that I've been involved with it all."
I must say, from...
Wait one second, I'm not done. I tend to drag on. I sit down, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, I think we should leave it the way it is. And the reason we don't vote on minutes if you're not here is because you have no particular knowledge of what went on at the meeting other than reading this. And, you know, it's just, that's the way it's done everywhere. If you're not there, you don't vote on the minutes. But anything else? Minutes have a pretty good record. I mean, if you've read the minutes, you've got a pretty good record. You'll know what's going on. But still, historically, if a person hasn't been at the meeting, if they're not listed as present, then they don't vote on the minutes. And this has been, every committee I've ever been on, this is the way it's been dealt with. And it may even be some kind of, by and office of state law or whatever, but maybe it's a law, it's a rules of order. Anyway, go ahead, Gavin.
I was just going to say that, you know, Bob and I both want as alternate members, we both, you know, took time to go and go on the sidewalk. And it seemed like, you know, one of us obviously had a better picture of the location in our mind, in this specific instance, than... Or any, when you go to the sidewalk, you have a visual picture, you know, of what was going on, and that one of us would have been better informed just because we took those hours to go and do it. You know, it's a commitment of time.
Right. But this was a discussion that had taken place over a few different meetings. It wasn't just, you know, it had been discussed in the past at meetings I wasn't even at, when it first came.
Right, but those were prior to the sidewalk.
Yeah, but still, there was information that was relayed that, you know, everybody was privy to. And people can't always make sidewalks for one reason or another. And if we...
That's why we have seven members, so I just thought...
Well, right, but alternates are kind of required to be at every meeting and every sidewalk that they can be at in the event that somebody else, right, that somebody else can't show. So just because as an alternate, you went to a sidewalk...
Well, someone else didn't show.
Right.
Were there, you know, obviously get the vote, I mean, because he went. It's just more information in the back of the脑子 in each of us holes. If they went on the sidewalk, they just have more information in general about the topic. I mean, it seems like a straightforward...
I understand what you're saying, but it's not something that I would want to make a hard and fast rule. Because things come up all the time that can throw it on its head, and, you know... I think we can deal with things the way they are. And because we're adults. We're professional planning board guys.
I look at it as an alternate, that's how I look at myself in this position. And if somewhere along the line, somebody comes to me and says, "Okay, you're going to possibly need to vote tonight," then I'll say, "Okay, that I've done what I've done for my homework, that I can make that decision."
Right.
But I don't look at myself as the person who's going to make that decision. You know, I'm there, if that works, great. You know, and if I, if it doesn't, and I don't vote, that's how I look at this position.
Right, right, right.
The other thing I would throw in to support my consideration that I'm asking the board to take up is the notion that six weeks previous to this discussion, so we had gone to an MMA seminar where this particular point was made to us that they felt that a non-attending to a site visit should not be on the application that would be subsequent to the site.
That was their opinion. There was no hard and fast.
That's not my recollection of what they said. What they said was that minutes need to be taken, that it is a meeting, and minutes need to be taken. They didn't, I don't remember them talking about voting. Maybe they did, maybe they specifically said that, but... They weren't talking about voting, they were talking about people showing up. They were talking about, I think the general topic was, what makes a meeting? And what are people allowed to talk about when they're not at a meetings?
Well, they did seem to mention that if you weren't at a previous meeting, as opposed to a sidewalk, you weren't at the previous meeting, you didn't have as much information. Let's say someone came in, and they had an application for a store or something, and you weren't at that meeting, you wouldn't have as much information as the other members who were. And thus, at the next meeting, if voting occurred on that topic, you wouldn't vote on it because you weren't in attendance and didn't have the amount of information the other members have. This is what they said at MMA.
Right, right. No, I can see how that can happen. But I also think you can get caught up on stuff, too. Otherwise, you know, anytime anybody missed a meeting, anything that was discussed at that meeting, they couldn't vote on down the road. We don't want to take this down.
We're doing a conditional use permit, and weeks were going by, and someone missed maybe the introduction meeting, but they were there at subsequent meetings, does that disqualify them?
No, I'm speaking, my point that I'm raising tonight is specifically about site visits. And the subsequent meeting to the site visit, at which time a decision was being made.
Shouldn't he have been with you also?
What's that?
You should have videoed it, videotaped it. Since we're taking all meetings.
My contention is that a mere...
Great, great.
My contention is that a mere two-dimensional view of the project does not substitute for an onsite visit. And in fairness to applicants, I'm not just thinking it's good boardsmanship, but it's a more fair way to treat an applicant who comes before the board. If the decision hinges upon a board member who had no immediate experience of the site, and that decision was against the applicant, I would be pretty upset if that was the outcome. And it very well could be, to be honest. I just want to point out that it's...
The question was whether to accept some proposal.
I had finished my point. The point that I'm trying to raise is, I don't think it's good boardsmanship to defer to an absentee member, maybe because they were a voting member, or maybe that could also change. It could be an alternate who would be involved in this. But there is no substitute for firsthand experience. But the two-dimensional view of the site, and we had very flimsy information on it, say, Kenny didn't even have a total map. If you recall, we had a little piece of blue paper.
That's one of the reasons we wanted to do sidewalks.
Just denoted size of lot lines and parcel map. That was all we had. And there wasn't much...
There were two pictures of the Keaton, too, but they were pretty close to the building itself.
Right. And the only information we had about the site was, I think I asked the question, "Kenny," at which point Yolli, if I recall, said, "Let's take a sidewalk." I think it's good that she, very good that she did that. But I think we had very flimsy information upon which to base any discussion if there wasn't. There's nothing, there's no substitute discussion. I'll just throw it out, I'll make a motion that, unless there's any more discussion, that from now on, we follow the same protocol that we do with minutes, where the member who is absent at the meeting described in the minutes is not eligible to vote for the minutes. The corollary is, when an individual is absent from a site visit, they are not eligible to vote on the application when it comes up for discussion at the subsequent meeting. I think it's only a fraction. Ready to proceed?
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any further discussion? Kind of alternate, make a second motion. Jeez, I don't know, you got me there.
Two other, well, eight, two other times you said an alternate could second a motion.
Did I?
I'm unclear as to whether an alternate can make a motion, but it seemed like we could second a motion.
I'll let it go, I mean...
I'm looking at it.
I have a problem with it. And it's something we can look up, I suppose, depending on how pissy you want to get. So, and I, I'll find that deal with you two guys.
I'm also referring...
Wait! We're discussing now.
Also referring to the expertise of the two MMA, and I think they were lawyers, who spoke to us that night?
Jeez, that's... All right, there's more experience. No, I don't care. Not here, it doesn't...
Yeah, I think...
Yes, Yolli.
But I think it is a good point to be raised in terms of, I think we all need to be more mindful about when we vote, about making sure that we're as educated as we can be in what we're voting on, and thinking about that there may be other people at the table that could vote in our place that may be...
That's always an option.
But I think it makes sense to keep it in that, I think we all need to be responsible in terms of thinking of that for ourselves. So often, we go out on sidewalks. I mean, just because I went on a sidewalk doesn't mean I necessarily... Maybe I missed a meeting before, or maybe I'm not as educated on that in some other way. But it doesn't necessarily mean that just because I went on a sidewalk, either that I'm as fully educated as I could be on the topic. So I don't know, I think it just makes sense to kind of keep it individually based, and that we're all being mindful. And don't be very involved.
Anybody else? Any further discussion? All right, then, all of us in favor of Tom's motion, which is... Y'all know what it is. Raise your hand. Although opposed to the motion. Three or one?
Next point?
There's more?
Could we have some means with Lenny's help, maybe, of tracking, who is the, quote, eligible alternate at a particular meeting?
You mean like if Gavin voted the last meeting, it would be Bob's turn if Bob was who had...
As far as there's no, there's no back and forth.
It's...
Tell me again what I'm doing.
He just watched, he just watched you keep track of, if an alternate votes, which alternate votes?
The last thing both of us voted.
But there were two people missing.
Right, right, exactly.
So then we start over, and guess what?
I have to...
It's in the rules, babe.
Do you want to defer to a third, or a more, maybe educated opinion from MMA on this thing you just considered?
No. I think we decided, we have voted.
Okay.
And I think it's for the time being...
We're going to have to accept?
No.
The other question I had, and this was made for Kenny, it seemed odd when we were wrestling with that Phos road thing, that the only thing that we have were eligible to review was the location of the camp. And whereas they were going to be running it greater down... Kenny, I want, I'll backtrack a sentence. On the Phos road application, when we were wrestling with, you know, where to put the camp, and you made the point that the only thing that we were, we had standing, so to speak, to review was whether to move it back and where to move it on the site. And when you stood back from that application, the movement of the camp was like 10% of sort of the disturbance that would be occurring. It seemed odd to me, and I tried to review the ordinance today without much success, to get a toehold on what DEP's real intent is there in terms of boards standing to make that decision. They had a list of criteria, you could look at slope, you know, general topography issues, erosion issues, et cetera, et cetera. But it didn't, it didn't give the board that I could see real latitude to address the issues that the Phos road site raised for me. Just because 90% of the problem dealt with the amount of, the impact that would occur on the site, just getting a machine to and from the building.
Temporary disturbance?
Yeah. But given that slope, I don't know whether that would ever be factually, actually temporary disturbance, but is that going forward here?
I don't think so.
Okay. But could we get some help, maybe, from Wendy Garland or something, if I phrase that issue a little better in terms of, what are the areas really that the board can take into consideration when they're reviewing something like that?
It's in our ordinance under the best possible occasion, the criteria that you're looking at, the existing. And we've normally not looked at the vegetation, knowing that there's a good chance if we allow the vegetation to stay, they're just going to cut it, or if we, you know, we don't move it back any further because of the cluster of trees, and they remove the trees a few years later, then we've served no good. So by not looking at the vegetation, removing it back as far as possible and requiring them to re-vegetate between development and the resource, that's the ideal situation, I think.
Does, on a slope of that pitch, it's way past, you know, 20, does that trigger DEP review of any kind?
Just the permit by rule.
So they would need some, oh, so they might not...
That's any activity within 75 feet is going to require that.
Okay. But there's nothing else that's triggered by that application on that kind of slope that would require DEP on site visit, right?
No.
It just disturbed me that there was proposed, you know, that much soil disturbance on that slope, I still don't...
Cross diagonal with a slope.
Yeah.
Quite common, they would have the camp there, they rip the camp out, they make a road right through where the old camp was to get the well to the lake, because they're putting a septic up by the road. So quite often, they're building a driveway or a road just to get down to the lake to put the well in. And then that all gets cleaned up, and they work from the lake back to the driveway, re-establishing and vegetating. That's usually the biggest problem, is locating the well.
The problem that I can see is that with these, as these come in to us in the future, I think there are only going to be more and more marginal sites. You know, they're going to be tougher and tougher to develop, because that's what's left out there for our own.
Not really. What's left out there are 50, 100-year-old camps, so it's just whatever site they're on. If they were vacant lots, I'd agree with you. But you could have a mobile home. A mobile home's usually on the best lot there is, because you got 70 feet of flat they need. So, I mean, they could be pulling a mobile home out and working from that. But almost all the topography down to the lake is a slope. It's sloping down, too.
Right, but, I mean, Phos road was a pretty extreme case. I think that's, that's the worst thing I've ever looked at.
Slope wise?
Yeah. Slope wise, and just the whole proposal wise.
There's several lots, especially on Great East, that are, you know, 200, 300 steps from the road down to the camp.
Right.
You know, they're tough.
Well, is there any way we can get, well, I'll just write up a memo, maybe we can send it over to DEP, you know, have the board look at it. I just, I just was hopeful that there was, there was issues that we could take into account, that we were eligible to take into account when we were reviewing those, other than just, do we move the building back 10 feet, 16 feet? Because in that particular proposal, I thought that was inconsequential.
Well, it says we can consider slope and the amount of vegetation that needs to be removed, because sometimes we haven't moved places further back because there's been, you know, a lot of big trees in the lake. But it does say that we can look at slope, and we can, and the amount of vegetation that needs to be removed as far as getting the structure back as practically possible away from the lake.
It didn't seem to indicate that it would give us the right to consider those same issues pertaining to site access, so to speak.
Right, just the location of it. But at that time, I think the best thing to do was recommend somebody from York County Soil and Water to review it. A professional to be on, draw up a plan and re-establish.
Somewhere to access, the access part of the issue, yeah.
Yeah, when they're complicated or... When they're complicated or such.
You mean self-tech would be part of the review process?
Um, it has been on a lot of them, required that Joey Anderson go out and review a project and...
No, I mean, I mean in conjunction with when it comes to the board, so we could have a better sense of what the site impact was going to be other than just maybe excluding telling us, well, this is how we're going to do it. I mean, we'd have, we really, that was the other thing that troubled me about that prospect was that we really didn't have much information on the table to get our arms around what was going to happen besides you telling us, well, they're going to have to cut a 12-foot swath, you know, diagonally down the slope and it'll be lovely afterwards.
Re-vegetate it after, yes, but without approving the project, are you going to go ask the applicant to go get an engineer, design up all this, come back and then the project's not approved? Or do you approve it with the conditions that he needs to bring in that documentation?
I just question, where do you, where's the division line there between providing the board a fair amount of information to basis of sound judgment on versus, you know, burdening the applicant with that issue that you raised?
Yeah.
The, that's something we need to think through, I think.
Anybody else? Anything else, Tom?
No.
Anyone else say anything? Alright then. Good night, cable man. That's it, we'll see ya.